Okay, we are recording.
All right, so I'd like to call the Tuesday, July 7th, 2020 Duval City Council meeting to order. Clerk, or first of all, could we please join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, with that clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Brudnicki.
Here.
Councilmember Ayer.
Present.
Councilmember McHenry.
Here.
Councilmember Remington.
Thank you, Councilmember Remington.
Did you hear me?
I do now.
Okay.
Councilmember Hoag.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
Councilmember Langle.
Here.
Have a forum.
All right, thank you. Under additions or corrections to the agenda, on consent, please add payroll for June 20th, 2020 in the amount of $162,946.48. Payroll for July 3rd, 2020 in the amount of $300,759.62. Claims for June 17th, 2020 through July 7th, 2020 in the amount of $108,427.88. And under scheduled items, please remove number five, King County Fire District 45. And are there any council members that would like to speak this evening? Hoag and McHenry. All right, anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Do we have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Mike Remington, so moved.
McHenry, second.
Okay, so we have a first and a second by councilmembers Remington and McHenry. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
Mike Remington, so moved.
Second, Michelle Hoag.
Excellent, Councilmember Remington moved, Councilmember Hoag seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Next up is comments from the audience. First off, clerk, have we received any written comments for public comment this evening?
We have not, and I have allowed all of the current attendees to speak, so if any of them want to speak, they can unmute themselves and do so now.
Excellent, we have somebody that's put in the comments that they would like to comment, Ms. Valerie Stewart. So you're up and you have three minutes, and if you could provide your name and address, and you're welcome to speak.
Okay, great, this is Valerie Stewart. My address is 28329 Northeast 147th Court in Duval. And I am the Far East Senior Hub Program Coordinator for the Mount Si and Snow Valley Senior Centers. And I'm reading a letter representing the Snow Valley Local Advocacy Team of the King County Alliance for Human Services. And I'd like to just read you a letter that we sent to you guys on June 9th of 2020. Dear Duval City Council, thank you for the work you do to support our community. Public service is both demanding and rewarding. We're here to help. We are the Snoqualmie Valley Local Advocacy Team of the King County Alliance for Human Services, and we represent many human service organizations in Snoqualmie Valley. Human services are designed to strengthen our community by providing the solid foundation of essential supports throughout the lives of our community members that allow people to live up to their full potential. This support includes early childhood education to services for seniors, shelters, youth development, and food banks, as well as support for survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault. Our deep experience and commitment to the well-being of everyone in our community member, of every one of our community members makes us uniquely prepared to help our community navigate through this challenging time and the long-term rebuilding process that will follow. We are asking that you make a meaningful and sustained commitment to bolstering the community's health and human services infrastructure. You can do this through adequate funding and by ensuring that human service leaders have a seat at the table as important decisions are made about our community's health. Ultimately, it is the responsibility of the city of Duval to be a strong partner in taking care of their residents. Providers are the embedded community partners who are already doing this work. We are the dedicated nimble and strategic partners you need to help take care of all of your residents, and we look forward to continuing this collaboration. And thanks again for all you do. Let's make a legacy, kindness regards. And it's signed by Laura Smith of Snoqualmie Valley Community Network and a ray of other leaders in the valley. So I hope you get a chance to read that. I can send it off if you need another copy.
Thank you so much, Valerie. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Okay, not seeing any at this point. Clerk, did you see any hands raised? Clerk, you're on mute.
Yes, I am, sorry. I have not seen any hands raised. I've allowed everyone to speak that's currently listed as an attendee, so if anybody would like to speak, they can unmute themselves and let themselves, you know, know.
All right. Not seeing any, so we'll go ahead and move on. First up is scheduled items, mayor's report, and I would like to defer part of my time for Lieutenant Sabrin to kind of give an update on what it was like on the Fourth of July. I was not in town, but I heard it was pretty extensive with fireworks, and I know that folks are probably interested in the number of calls and what have you that we received that evening. So with that, Lieutenant Sabrin.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Steve Sabrin, Duval Police. So I spoke with Sergeant Warwick, who was working that night, and I got a little report on the Fourth of July, specifically the fireworks. We had, we only had four total contacts related to fireworks that night. Two were prior to 11:00 PM, so within the ordinance. Those were both on foot patrols that we uncovered on our own. They weren't anything that we were called to. So one was in McCormick Park and one was in the Big Rock Ball Field parking lot. There were families getting ready to light fireworks. We just kindly asked them to move along as it was getting dark, and there were no issues whatsoever. We did receive two 911 calls after 11 o'clock. One we were able to locate and one that we were not. The one that we were able to locate was a family that had just lost track of time and graciously stopped lighting them off once we asked them to. We did not issue any citations or confiscate anything this year. And from what my staff's been telling me, it was a very typical Fourth of July in Duval. It wasn't anything that was any further along than what's been done in the past.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you, does anybody have any questions for Lieutenant Sabrin? Councilmember Brudnicki.
I was just curious, because I'm not familiar with what the restrictions are for the type of fireworks that we can send out here. But is there any sort of level of fireworks that are not allowed? Or is everything allowed in the city? I'm just curious, because, I mean, we had to move cars and things in order to not have damage from some of the fireworks. Not that we were blowing them, I'm just saying, some of the fireworks were very big, very beautiful. I didn't know, you know, and considering in the past years when we've had very dry, hot, whether those type of fireworks, I think, would be really a big concern. So is there any sort of standard for what kind of fireworks get to be blown in our city?
Um, it's my understanding, it's typically fireworks that are sold at the stands you would see in town. A lot of the stuff, the much larger stuff that's bought elsewhere. I don't have exact verbiage on what is and isn't in front of me. I could definitely get back to you on that, but it's my understanding, and kind of the way we see it, is the, a lot of the fireworks that are sold in town, that you see sold at typical stands, are acceptable. Things that are larger than that, that go beyond that scope are things that people have generally have more concerns about, would be considered more on the illegal side, but I would need to do a little more research for you to give you 100% accuracy.
Mayor, you're on mute.
Anybody else have any questions, further questions for Lieutenant Sabrin? Councilmember McHenry.
Not a question, just thanks for all the work you and the department do.
Thank you, appreciate that very much.
All right, I think that's it. So thank you, Lieutenant Sabrin, for taking time out of your evening to be with us when Chief Hurt couldn't. So thanks, enjoy your evening.
Good night.
Good night. So moving on to the mayor's report, obviously, we've been pretty busy with trying to figure out how to move forward with CARES Act funding, et cetera. As was mentioned during committee of the whole, we're hoping to have some ideas and draft policy ready within the next two weeks. We will be on a tight timeframe to move those things forward, so as soon as we have a draft, we'll get that out to the council as a whole. Which, again, as I mentioned in the meeting, also includes a 5,000 direct allocation from Councilmember Lambert's office, as well as 11,000 in additional CARES Act funding from the county, which will expand what we're able to delegate out to the community. Today, the Sound Cities, or Monday, the Sound Cities Association's Events Committee met. We're, of course, talking about how to adapt Sound Cities as putting on multiple online forums instead of the normal networking events that we typically have. And they'll definitely come in useful, there's a race in social justice, one upcoming. I don't remember the date offhand. We also had a meeting with the King County Executive and Patty Hayes from Seattle King County Public Health last week. As we heard at our 5:30 meeting from our emergency director, the numbers of COVID cases are increasing significantly, and their ask was to, for all elected officials to start pounding the message of wear a mask to make sure that we hopefully don't go back into a Phase 1.5 or a Phase 1. Also attended the King County Metro briefing that was online, and I mentioned this morning, the governor's press conference, where they were also, again, talking about the need to wear masks and do what we can to re-flatten the curve in the state so we don't continue to go backwards. Also attended, two weeks ago, the Association of Washington Cities Annual Conference. I think, you know, I was pretty honored to be elected in a three-way race to the Western Cities 5,000 population more-at-large seat for the Board of Directors in a three-way race, and that was voted on by all of the delegates in the state. Definitely something that I, with the opponents that I had, definitely was not expecting a win, let alone a win on the first ballot. So I'm very honored and looking forward to that service for our state. We had our first Board of Directors meeting the day after, really just more about logistics and starting to talk about upcoming special sessions. We did learn today that they are not planning a special session for August, so we're going to have to wait a while to get some of the work done, I think, at the city level that we need the legislature to do moving forward. We, as part of the AWC Annual Meeting, also approved the AWC Statement of Policy, so that will guide the organization through the next several years at both the state and federal level. And tomorrow, we have the Legislative Committee meeting, and our legislative agenda really is guided off of those principles and the draft that we started so far. So there's a lot of good work going on, it's a perfect opportunity for, you know, our jurisdiction to become even more involved this year, as, you know, we're likely to see more capital projects being funded and what have you. So it's a really exciting time to be a part of AWC. Also want to give a shout out to our new AWC Board President, the Mayor of Twist, Suey Moody. Some of you who have seen the profile done on her in the Seattle Times over the weekend. She's an incredible person and role model for all of us to look up to, having been through multiple federally declared disasters in the last several years. And she's just, if you have the opportunity to get to know our AWC events, she's definitely someone that you would appreciate talking to. So with that, that is the end of my report. Are there any questions? Councilmember Langle.
I've been following with AWC the efforts around economic development. And tax increment financing has been out there trying to get it passed for a long time. It would take a constitutional amendment as it currently sits. But then the other thing that was on the AWC legislative agenda had to do with economic development financing, and, you know, that's, that passed the House of Representatives, but stalled in the Senate. They just ran out of time on some of these things. But what I, and there's a good chance it won't get funded quickly just because of the, what is it, $8.8 billion state deficit. But what I wanted to convey to council and you specifically, now that you're in such an important role, is that although tax increment financing might not be something that we can use easily, these are two bills that I think really should, we should watch, because there aren't very many opportunities to get economic development money, and we don't meet the traditional thought process around either being rural or around being a community in need, when in fact, there may be, you know, economic development needs that we do have around our business community. So I'm really happy that you're on the board, because you can have, you know, a real voice for us around those two pieces of legislation. And if there's anything on those two, you know, that I can help with, please let me know. I mean,
Absolutely.
I think I can provide some perspective if that's helpful.
Yeah, and just of note, though, that those bills that were in the last bidam are dead, and so if they, they're going to have to be reintroduced.
Exactly, that's why I'm calling them out now, because I've been tracking them. And, yeah, I know they're not going anywhere right now. They're, you know, with the budget deficit, the economic development financing probably is really going to be stalled. But it, you know, forward-thinking with you on the board, you know, maybe we can start to gear up around economic development.
Yeah, there's going to be a lot of good work to do, and as I've encouraged council the last few years, the more you can get involved with AWC, the better, the better off we'll be as a city as well. So thank you for that, Councilmember Langle, I appreciate it. Any other questions? Okay, moving on, we have Councilmember Hoag that wanted to speak this evening.
So I attended the King County Flood Control District Advisory Committee meeting on June 19th, and this was our first meeting of the year. And so our supervisor, Board Chair, Uplibro, was there, and he shared with us his goals this year. And first, his goal is to better the environmental partner, be a better environmental partner, ensure all parts of the county receive fair return on their investments. There's three new grant programs, urban streams, culvert replacement, and coastal erosion. Third, he wants to improve transparency around the budgeting process. Our next meeting will be digging into the budget on July 13th, and also we'll be learning more about the Snoqualmie Basin capital investment strategies. So, and then tomorrow night, I have a Sound Cities Public Issues Committee meeting. And one of the items on our agenda is the Board of Health Declaration of Racism as a Public Health Crisis. On June 18th, King County Board of Health unanimously approved a resolution declaring racism a public health crisis and committed to efforts. The Board will undertake, committing to efforts, the Board will undertake to address racial equity and health disparities in all forms. While the Board of Health is taking action to address the public health impacts of systemic racism, many other organizations, including Sound Cities Association, are exploring ways to address racism in all levels. And at the PIC meeting tomorrow, we'll have an opportunity to provide feedback to Sound Cities on roles in facing these challenges. So I would welcome any input on this issue if you wanted me to bring it up at the meeting tomorrow. And that's it.
You're on mute, Mayor. That's weird, okay. Looking at two different things here. Does anybody have any feedback for Councilmember Hoag for tomorrow evening? I would just like to say, you know, I'm glad that the Public Health District is addressing this issue in this way. I think there's a lot of systemic issues that are obvious when it comes to public health and racism inepties. So this is a positive step forward, and I look forward to seeing what comes out of it. So thank you for serving on PIC and being that first touch on it, Councilmember Hoag. Next up, we have Councilmember McHenry.
Thank you, just, I think Councilmember Napolin spoke a bit during our COW about the AWC conference. I was also able to attend this year, this is my first time. Just normally with work schedule, I'm not able to travel, but due to COVID and it all being online, it was pretty easy to do this year. So I really enjoyed all the webinars, I was able to also attend one networking session. I would recommend highly to anyone who couldn't make it. I think if you log in, the webinars are available to watch even after the fact. And I found the one hosted by National League of Cities on advancing racial equity to be really valuable. So I really enjoyed that one, especially out of all the others. During the networking session, I think I was not in the same one as Councilmember Napolin. So just to bring forth what I had heard in the networking session I was on, was hearing from different cities on things that council had done to help the community or to help during this time. And one, just one example was that they had recorded videos of civic lessons for kids, and I thought that was a pretty cool idea. And thinking on, I think the mayor just touched on also about how it's really important for everyone to emphasize the importance of wearing masks when we go out and we can't be, you know, distant enough from each other. So I know initially I had talked about recording some sort of message from council, and so I just, things got busy and a little hectic with homeschooling, but now that we're in summer, I just wanted to recommit to that. If council was still interested in doing that, I could help from a safe distance on porch, take video of each council member and then put them together in one message if Mr. Tozer doesn't have time, because I know he has a full schedule. But that's something I could certainly handle doing if council was still interested in just providing a message to the community and encourage that mask-wearing.
I think that would be great if people would do that. I really like that.
That's all I have.
So just email Amy if you're good on it, I know Sean's good on it. Anything we can do for public messaging is good. And that was definitely part of the key public health messages, they're tired of looking at the county executive and other health officials, and they need people more local to be strengthening that message. So, yes. Moving on, I basically gave kind of where we're at administratively. We know that Director Thomas is out on vacation this week. Chief Hurt was unable to attend, and so we'll move on. We do not have any presentations this evening, but we do have a public hearing for a resolution.
There was a section for council committee reports, are there?
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, I accidentally glossed over that. So do we have any council committee reports this evening? Mayor, pretend Remington, and then Councilmember Hoag.
Thank you, Mayor, I won't go over all of our committee notes. I just wanted to mention that we had our meeting on June 24th with Chief Hurt, and we covered a lot of items, as you can imagine. We talked about the full-time SRO, School Resource Officer position, the part-time liaison officer position with the school. I will say that the school district is very happy with that program and wants to continue it. Other items we talked about was the parking ordinance. We're currently at $50, most other cities are at 50. We were considering whether to increase that to help cover some of our court costs that are involved. The key things that we really spent more time on was community outreach and just the current affairs in the country related to police officers. We recognized how thankful we are for our police department. We did look at the key items that citizens are asking about. Specifically, we talked about police training as relates to cultural diversity, use of force, de-escalation, training, militarization of police that some departments have actively sought. And we talked about some of the laws that relate to this, including I-940 that was passed requiring specific training, Community Safety Act, again, which requires 40 hours of additional training for officers in these key areas. Our department has already undertaken much of this training. Currently, at the State Academy, officers have 720 hours total of training just in some of these de-escalation and dealing with special events that they run into. So that training piece is huge. Also, we are taking a look at our policies and procedures. Duval uses Lexipol, that is a national group that you can join to be a part of. These are professionals, both attorneys, law enforcement, that provide really the state-of-the-art, the most up-to-date policies for police and fire departments, mostly here on the West Coast, but certainly some on the East Coast as well. So that's the brief overview. We have, as a committee, asked the chief to come to a council meeting or COW to basically give some of that same presentation and information, allow council members to talk a little bit more in depth and ask questions, as well as talk about what does community engagement look like? Is that doing a survey, is it having special meetings with the community? Is that inviting folks to a council meeting or a COW to, similar to what we did with fireworks ordinance? So all of that was under discussion, and we look forward to having that information brought to a city council as a whole. No, we didn't make any decisions, but it was really helpful to spend that time with the chief and some of his staff, with Steve, to be able to talk about where we're at. Very important topic for our community and region. I will invite, if Councilmember McHenry has any input or if Diane has any questions or things to bring forward to council.
I think that was a great summary. I would just add on to that a little saying that I was really impressed with Lieutenant Sabrin's discussion or presentation of the training that the department does. And I really appreciate, it's such an obvious positive attitude that they all take toward the training. They're excited to do it, they make it work with their schedules. And I think it's something that beyond the police department can look at, you know, is training for racial equity and how you deal with that in your community. So I just, I was really impressed, and I think that once they're able to present that to the community, it'll be a really positive response as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoag?
So the Finance Committee, we met with Dana Mason on the 29th, and we spent a couple hours going over the procurement policy. We got about a third of the way through. And we will be meeting again on July 15th at 1:00 to work on it again. Tomorrow's regular Finance Committee meeting has been canceled, so that's it.
Thank you. So now, we don't have a presentation, but we do have a public hearing for a resolution declaring certain city property surplus. And I, is this Mr. Lenishewski that's handling this? Or is it the clerk?
Oh, there he is, I was going to say, I'm willing, but it looks like Steve's available, so I'll let him take.
He wasn't supposed to be here this week, this is his vacation.
Yeah, it can be up to anybody, but yes, I have no problem introducing the surplus item as it is. Very swift and very basic. So hello, Steve Lenishewski, Public Works.
I guess I first, first off, I should open the public hearing before we get going. So I just had to clarify who is going to present it this evening. So with that, I'd like to open the public hearing, pretend I'm. So I just had to clarify who is gonna present it this evening. So with that, I'd like to open the public hearing, pretend I have a gavel. And Mr. Lenishewski.
All right, thank you. Stephen Asheski, Public Works. Provided tonight is a seemingly third or quarterly attempt at providing a surplus list of items that the city has either no longer need for, or they've run their course in their service to our use, or they are broken and still have some value left within them. The list of items has been provided as well as an image. There are nine at this point, all in total, including one vehicle from police. And with that, the sales of any items generally goes back to the accounts that purchased them. So we have tried to clarify the numbers of the accounts on each item at council's request from the last time we had a public hearing. So with that said, I will open the floor to public comment.
I also wanted to make a quick comment that the staff report that was issued in the packet does state that Exhibit 4, which is an affidavit of public hearing notice, was a placeholder. And just prior to when the packet was issued, I was able to get a copy of that. So it was in the original packet.
Great, thank you. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment this evening?
I have allowed all attendees to comment if they want to unmute themselves. They can do so now.
I'm not seeing anyone unmute, so I'll give it one more chance. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this this evening? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed, and we'll move on to new business. The first item is to confirm Mayor Okerlander's appointment of Don Bem to the Duval Cultural Commission, Position 4, a vacant three-year term ending 12/31/22. And I just want to say, you know, I had the the pleasure of meeting Ms. Bem a few weeks ago, and she certainly has a passion that I think is going to be very useful to our cultural commission and hopefully expanding the scope of what the group does and looks at, and has a lot of energy. And I really think she's gonna be a great addition to to the commission and an asset to the city. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain a motion unless there are questions.
I move Diane Bradnicki to confirm Mayor Okerlander's appointment of Don Bem to the Duval Culture Commission, Position 4.
Second, McHenry.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And and Don, would you like to say anything to the group? Don, you're welcome. If you'd like to say anything, you're welcome to at this point. I guess not. Well, welcome, Don, and look forward to your service on the Cultural Commission. So thank you. Moving on to Agenda Bill 20-55, Contract for Depot Deck Replacement for Introduction and Discussion for Public Works.
Good evening again. Steve Lenishewski, Public Works. So provided in the packet is results from the bid opening of the Depot Deck Construction Advertisement. We did, were, I guess, successfully had three bids. So that is, it is good news, you know, more the merrier for competition. But we did receive bids. A little bit of a wide, wide variety in range, but we did and have checked out the low bidder. And they have checked off all of the boxes as far as, you know, debarment and then researching their previous experiences. They're a little light on heavy, you know, heavy commercial installations, and they are a roofing contractor, but have done some decks. So, and another agency. More than just residential commercial work. So that was a little bit of a concern, but answered questions and seemed to be by far as construction. I did know on the council packet that it was informational. I thought that was expected to be here, but so that could be our point. We have and we will install place right around almost to the T, the injury estimate, which in this case was our will be happy to entertain any questions. I did have one call today from Councilmember Lengel regarding financing and just to be use of REIT. So there are no sunset terms on REIT time. People have a sunset so we can use those for a while. And the question, use of the King County levy may for parks that is a valid use. For that for the year, it was 100 million per director. On installment to get us right around 116,000. So that was a good discussion, but other than that, I had no questions or comments from anyone. So I opened up the floor.
Does anyone have any questions or comments for Mr. Lenishewski? Councilmember Lengel?
I just want to say that, but first, thanks for taking my call and answering my question. The, I'll just express my preference for REIT. And the reason for that is that we haven't done any kind of community process or even internal planning about the King County money. And Parks money, it'd be nice to at least have some opportunity to hear from the community about what they want to see done in our parks. And it also doesn't have a capital requirement. So if they're, meaning capital improvement, capital projects requirement. So the nice thing about the county money is it does have a lot of flexibility. I think more so than REIT. So that was why I wanted to find out about the source. The only question I have for the director is, given that this contractor hasn't, doesn't have decks as their primary line of business, what kind of contingency have you built into the project?
One minute. As far as contingencies, there is a little bit of a miscellaneous line item. I think it was $4,000. But our legal group can attest that it's pretty tough to toss someone out who has met the min falls to do the work. Certainly, if there was a huge concern, we would do what we needed to do to try to, you know, not use anybody who we didn't think would be qualified, but we really haven't found anything to disqualify them other than somewhat of an inexperience. But they have done work on even Davis Bacon Wage projects, which that's a lot of paperwork. So they can handle that. They can handle our standard paperwork. So we looked.
I just to clarify, I wasn't concerned about the low bidder aspect of it. I was more directing that question to Public Works. Do you have contingency in in your thought processes, in your budgeting in the event that there is a need for change orders, anything unforeseen? The question really was related to Public Works, not the contractor.
Misinterpreting that, my bad. We have some resources in general set aside throughout the year for engineering services as a city professional service. And Andy Kovak could certainly help out in in the need. I think we have $1,000 lined out for him to use if he need it. So it'll be a little bit of work, and it's fairly small project, and we have great building department staff who can assist too. So Brian's here and James is in the field as well. So we should be okay. I think we're covered that way.
Right. Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember McHenry?
Just to clarify, I was trying to just see if this was spelled out here. The railing, I remember there were two designs, just standard, and then the one that had sort of the decorative style. Are you just talking about the standard straight style, or is that not something that's been decided yet?
So no, we bid the standard base. And then the decorative feature was 3,000 more by the low bidder, so we didn't recommend using that. That certainly could be something council chooses to determine, but, you know, I think the the less is more approach in this was, is totally acceptable.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Good question.
All right. Any further questions? So is Mayor Pretend Remington. You're on mute.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, so the process here, I mean, I don't know if this is considered our first touch looking at the contract. It's better to do these things in summertime. So where do you see, what's what's the outline for for council to be able to vote and move this forward?
Again, I wasn't intending to be here, which is why I sent it as informational. But had a hindsight 2020, I would have put, you know, discussion decision. There's no reason to not if we're comfortable moving forward. I think as it was put, we have touched this many times throughout the year and a half, as we broke the project out into phases for, you know, tear down, building renovation, and then deck addition. So we've we've three phased, the one phase, we've talked about it plenty. I'm up for, you know, a motion to suspend the rules and, you know, get it done tonight. Bring it back next week. We can put it under council item. We can put it under consent wherever it needs to go. There you go.
I'd like to move that we suspend the rules and move forward with this.
Right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Hope moved to suspend the rules. Councilmember McHenry seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. All right. Do we have a motion for the underlying bill?
Mike Remington, Mayor, I would move that we council approve Agenda Bill 20-55, Contract Depot Deck Replacement.
Second, McHenry.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Pretend Remington and a second by Councilmember McHenry. Any further discussion on this item?
Mayor, one question too. Should we move forward with the decision? We should probably work with the Finance Director on earmarking what type of funds to be utilized, whether it's REIT, REIT 1 or 2, a 50-50 split. We can do the math. So that might be something the group wants to discuss their support on before fully motioning, but I leave it to you all.
Councilmember Hope?
I'm I'm in agreement with Councilmember Lengel on REIT, using REIT.
Mayor Pretend Remington, thoughts?
No, I would support that as well. I think there's two parts to read, isn't there, Steve? So that, but I'm more than comfortable with you working with the Finance Director and Mayor and deciding which is the best spot that's coming out of one of those REIT funds. I think that's a good way to go.
Councilmember Bradnicki?
Yes, I'm in support of moving forward with working with the director on which bucket to hold that fund out to support that.
Okay. Councilmember Ayer? To which point, Councilmember Ayer, the REIT or working with the Finance? Thank you. Councilmember Napland?
I would prefer REIT over the other options.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember McHenry?
My preference is REIT, but I'm open to, you know, them working it out and figuring out where it should come from to within that.
Okay, so that's a split. So Councilmember McHenry, do you want to make a firm decision one way or the other?
Um, yeah, let, let, I'm good with them working with the director to work it out.
Okay, thank you. So we've got consensus there. Thank you very much. And then with that, we have a motion on the floor to approve the contract. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Thank you. This has been a long time coming, so it'll be nice when we can open that building up to the public again. Next agenda item is AB 20-56, 20 to 21, 2021 State of Washington Transportation Improvement Board Grant Application for Introduction and Discussion. Mr. Lenishewski.
All right. Good evening again. This will be the last time you hear from me tonight. Steve Lenishewski, Public Works. So as the Transportation Improvement Board requires council support via an agenda action item to place a project in the pool for hopeful selection. We somewhat developed a process last year to prioritize. So a few weeks ago, I had one kind of comment from Jennifer, Councilmember Napland, on that. Haven't had any other questions. I think one thing to note, remove projects from the list that have been installed by others. Coming here where this project is proposed. Big item two money off of me. But I did put in the metal. I know had angst perspective, some transformation of our of our level of services over time now with, you know, the pandemic. And it sounds from, you know, what we all hear is there will be a portion of our community who probably won't use much, not just ours, but theirs. So I think a level of service into because if there are less cars, our services will change. But just something as we move forward in this new but just want to make sure we pay them give it any effect in scoring or whatnot, but the way the numbers worked out by dumping them into the spreadsheet, it kind of worked out the same as last year. Since we haven't had much change outside of that. I do believe the project that we have recommended via the selection process internally through using spreadsheet from last year's prioritization. So R13 is there avenue from 140. Pearl Parks will be coming online soon in that area. There's a great time to do this. We would be designing this next year, probably for installation the year after, should it be successful. I don't want to downplay the project too much or the grant pool, but TIB normally sets aside about 110 million for their urban arterial program. With the reduction in revenues statewide, their program is reduced to about 70 million. I don't know how that bodes for our project in general, but on the flip side, I have heard of other agencies who are some of the work that they normally do, they're 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 handling more of direct operational needs and working from home. So, I mean, maybe rolling the dice in the cities is in the city's benefit this year as we kind of suspect there'll be less applicants going after the money. But time will tell. So with that said, I did try to show kind of the last mile. I know that's kind of a term people have heard in in the past for many facets of, you know, regional and national roadway and pedestrian connections. But, you know, from Safeway, a mile gets you to about the center of town up on the hill on 143rd and 275th, 143rd 45th and 275th. So it's an interesting connection point that would provide for improved access to the to the shopping center. But outside of that, that's what we have here. Sure, we had information that are because it takes about 40 hours to put it's quite substantial, you know, accident reports. You know, the TIB request, we fill out. So it does take a while. So any heads up later is appreciated. I assume there's gonna be some questions or discussion.
Councilmember Napland?
I just wanted to say I am very supportive of this project. And when you look at the city, it's kind of that last stretch to get residents off the hill and down to the safety. And when you look at the city, it's kind of that last stretch to get residents off the hill and down to the Safeway end. And with the parks opening up, potentially an elementary school going in there. I I know my teenagers, they walk all over the place, they ride their bikes, and I know they they do that stretch and without a sidewalk. It's concerning to me and I I'm excited to see that there's a possibility for us to get that connection completed. So and the other thing is I, you know, spending a lot of money right now is concerning. But what I've seen is our REIT money has come in strong and capital money has to be used for capital. So it's not like we can use capital money to prop up the general fund. It's, you know, it's kind of a separate pot of money. So I would be in support of applying for this project and we'll see how it comes out. But thank you, Steve, for putting that together. I appreciate it.
Any other questions or feedback for Mr. Lenishewski? If you wanted to suspend your rules and approve application, you're welcome to do that this evening. Councilmember Lingle.
I'll make a motion to suspend our rules.
Mike Remington, second.
All right. So Councilmember Lingle has moved and Mayor Portem Remington has seconded to suspend the rules to vote on this this evening. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, do we have a motion to approve Agenda Bill 20-56?
Mike Remington, Mayor, I recommend that council approve Agenda Bill 20-56, the 2021 State of Washington Transportation Improvement Board TIB Grant Application.
Second, McHenry.
All right. So Mayor Portem moved and we have a second from Councilmember McHenry. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes and I'm fingers crossed that we will get this grant because this is definitely, as Councilmember Napoli pointed out, a really important connection in the community. And once we get 275th done, this helps tie everything together. So my my hope is that we will be successful this year. So thank you for all your work, Mr. Lenishewski and staff on pulling all of this together.
Yeah, thank you. This does save us some time to do these in one meeting. So least confrontational items that move forward are certainly helpful for workflow. So thank you.
It saves time and money. So thank you. Next up is Agenda Bill 20-57, Washington Finance Officers Association Grant Award. And for discussion and or decision, Ms. Mason.
Good evening, Council. Dana Mason, Finance Director. So the city applied for a finance intern from the Washington Finance Officers Association in March and received it. Notice it had been awarded on June 28th. The grant is intended to encourage college students to explore the wonderful world of governmental finance, which has seen a drop in interest in the last few years. So the intern will have the opportunity to experience all areas of finance and also have a chance to work on a few key projects such as hopefully putting together the budget book helping set up a contract management process. And if the timing is right, working on the building permit module. The grant will pay for 216 hours to 238 hours work, depending on the hourly rate, which was based off the beginning steps for an accounting associate and is what's really similar to what other cities are paying for a finance intern. So we're hoping the intern can start mid August. And depending on what phase the city is in, the intern may need a laptop for remote work. So I've asked IT if there's like a repurposed laptop that the intern may be able to use. Or we can, if needed, we have a year for this grant, so we could push it off a little bit further. So we have a year or two since we accepted to use the grant funding. So what I'm asking for is for you to accept the grant. And then also we need a point one FTE added to the city's, I guess, FTEs for the year. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Lingle.
There we go. Well, you've all heard my spiel about why I think internships are great. So I'm really excited about this. A question I have about the the additional funds for the point one FTE. Is I guess this question is, I'm not sure, maybe it's for the mayor, but either Dana or the mayor. Is it your intent to come back to us and ask for the release of those funds under your $300,000 set aside under the recently approved budget?
No, this would be in addition because the grant, well, the grant is on a reimbursement basis. But based on past experience, the money comes pretty quickly. So we would just submit for reimbursement and then get those funds back right away.
No, what I'm talking about is the portion that we have to pay for.
We don't have to pay for anything.
So you're saying the 5,000 will be enough to to cover the entire cost. Okay.
It will.
Play for the, that's even better. Awesome. Awesome. Wow. Okay, so I guess my only other question, and this is for the mayor, do we need to have a suspending of the rules?
Yes.
May I make that motion?
Yes, you may.
I make a motion that we suspend the rules.
Is there a second?
I second that. Michelle Hoag.
Councilmember Lingle moved to suspend the rules. Councilmember Hoag seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Would someone like to make a motion on the Agenda Bill?
I make a motion. I make a motion to approve AB 20-57, Washington Finance Officers Association Grant Award.
All right.
Second.
So Councilmember Lingle moved. Councilmember Britt Nikki seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Yay to Ms. Mason and getting that intern. Thank you. Next up is Agenda Bill 20-58, Federal Award Standards Policy for Discussion and or Decision. And this is once again, finance.
Okay. So good evening, Council. Again, Dana Mason, Finance Director. In December, for federal procurement standards were updated and consolidated into something called II CFR Uniform Guidance. Local governments were given three years, a three-year grace period to fully comply with the requirements, which was supposed to be by January 1st, 2018. The guidelines require that recipients of federal funding establish and maintain effective internal controls that provide reasonable insurance assurance that the federal award is managed in compliance with all federal regulations and the terms and conditions of the award. So this piece is addressed in the federal award standards. And then also with the new guidance, there is a certification requirement which can be found on page one. So that has to be in any reimbursement, that language that's submitted to the federal government. And then also in addition to having a finance system that can accurately track and report federal awards and expenditures, the city must also have written procedures to determine the allowability of costs and on payment methods that minimize the time between the transfer of federal funds and the use of funds. And that section can be found on page two of the the policy. And then also the standards require that local governments use their own documented written procurement procedures, which reflect applicable state, local laws and regulations, provided that the procedures comply with federal laws. So basically applies that it requires the city to use the most restrictive procurement methods when purchasing items that are or services that are paid with federal funding. And then it also requires that local governments maintain written standards of conduct that cover conflicts of interest and employees engaged in the selection award and administration of the contracts. And that is on page four, five, four and five of the federal award standards that you have in your packet. And this, the standards that we use, this was initially in the procurement policy and we're pulling it off just to pulling it out just to make sure that we have these written procedures in place. Staff is already aware of them and we're going to use the procedures, keep them in mind when we're submitting reimbursements. So we're aware of them, but because they have to be written and part of our procurement policy, they must be passed by council. Are there, and the the guidelines that we're using or the standards that we're using are pretty standard for most cities. Kirkland has very similar similar standards, City of Anacortes. I believe North Bend also has very similar standards, the City of Lake Stevens as well. Are are there, do you have any questions or comments?
Councilmember Lingle.
Oh, yeah. I am. At the last finance and administration meeting, it became clear to me, even though I we're making lots of progress on our larger procurement. But, you know, it's very important that we do something around federal procurement to get our COVID money and any possible other federal funds. We have a grant application outstanding that's under block grant. So as a general statement, I'd like to see this go through. But there's one and there's there's two observations since we're out of sync with the rest of the procurement policies. And we're also out of sync with an ordinance that is being proposed and will be discussed this evening, whether voted on or not. And so it really just has to do with the way the resolution is written. And we talk about Exhibit A in Section 1. And if you look at Exhibit A and you look at the federal chart, the chart does say that we will use the most restrictive thresholds for contracting levels. But the problem is that the resolution itself doesn't state that. So what I'd like to see is just basically taking that type of language and having it actually in the resolution so that thought is never lost. And I understand what the director said with with respect to what's already embedded in the code. But I just think our resolutions should always be consistent with all of the stuff that follows it or is attached. And then the other thing, and just to throw this out, is one of the things we've talked quite a bit about in procurement is what city council's role is with respect to contracting. And Councilmember Napoli can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's set forth in RCW 35A.11.010. And what we have been talking about is as a general course of business, that all of our procurement be have that citation. And we don't have that in a whereas or in the document. So I wanted to throw that out as comments here from my colleagues about that. I I hate bringing this up. You know, the director's been extraordinarily busy and haven't had a chance really to talk to her about this. And so I super apologize on that. I just want everything to be consistent all the way through on procurement. And I just think that unfortunately, we have these things that are a little out of sync. The original goal was to have them happening simultaneously.
Right.
But the schedule just has messed this up and I don't want to hold her back on federal procurement. I just want to make sure we're we're staying consistent with other dialogue around procurement. So those are my comments. And I can offer language if you like.
Councilmember Napoli.
So just responding to something that Councilmember Lingle mentioned. And I had also looked for any statement that said we would use the more restrictive. And it's under the procurement section within the federal policy. And it does say that we will whatever is more restrictive. So I don't know, potentially, maybe we it would be helpful to say it, reiterate it in the ordinance. Or I can't remember, are we doing an ordinance resolution? But I did see it in there. I'm I'm not sure. Maybe Councilmember Lingle can clarify if she still feels like we need something in the resolution or ordinance. But the one thing I wanted to ask is, are we planning on always having this as a standalone? Or once we get the full procurement policy, we would include it in that and then kind of repeal and put this in, the the full procurement policy and have it be there. So we could, we could have time to tweak the federal as we're doing the full policy and then it would bring it in.
Right. This is almost a stop stopgap until we get our procurement policy. So we can do one of two things. We can either just reference it or we can repeal it, like you said, and put it right into the procurement policy.
Okay.
Whatever.
We want to tweak something as we're working on the full procurement policy. We could go that route to just bring it in if we had anything. And the one other question I had is, you mentioned that it's it's very similar to other cities' federal procurement policy. Is there anything substantive that you can think of that ours differs from some of the other ones? Or is it just kind of really minor minor wording?
It's minor, it's pretty much minor wording and the thresholds because our our the city's thresholds are different than other cities.
Okay.
The procurement thresholds.
Okay.
All right. Any further discussion? So we have, we have one council member that wants to potentially make an amendment, but we haven't heard from the other council members. This is on for discussion and or decision. So, you know, council has the option to move this forward this evening with suspending the rules. But I would like to hear from the other council members as well before determining, you know, before any amendments or motion are made. Councilmember Britt Nikki. Oh, you're on mute now.
For anything like this that requires amendments, then I would like to have the time between now and the next meeting to review those amendments and consider them.
Okay. Thank you. The question then would be, if there were no amendments, are you amenable to moving this forward based on what the finance director has said?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Iyer.
Yeah, considering we're we're on this and this being a stopgap, I'd be comfortable moving forward. Sounds like the language is there. And then, you know, I guess I would prefer the repeal or replacement with a kind of a holistic look at it. I don't, I have finance committee, this won't get away from them, so. Good.
All right. Okay. Councilmember McHenry.
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Iyer. I'd be good with moving this forward and then looking at, you know, those proposed changes in the future.
All right. Councilmember Remington.
Fine with moving forward.
Okay. Councilmember Lingle, you're welcome to make a motion and make amendment or or if somebody wants to suspend the rules to go ahead and vote on this tonight, be happy to entertain that. Wait, did I get Councilmember Hoag? My screen flipped, so I apologize. Did I not get you, Councilmember Hoag?
No, but I guess I just had a question for the attorney. If we did approve this tonight, in the future, is it going to be a standalone policy or is it going to end up being merged with our big procurement policy? That would be a question for the attorney. I'm just curious.
So that's what Councilmember Napoli brought up already. And it's really whatever you want to do. If you want to merge it into the larger policy document, you can do that. Or you can have it as a standalone. It sounds like most of the council members were thinking that maybe you want to have it have a holistic procurement policy that would just include this as another section. If you do that, you would just repeal this resolution and insert it into your larger policy document.
Then I'm I'm good with proceeding with this now, just knowing that we'll be looking at it again in the near future.
All right. Then with that, if folks are ready to move forward, I'd be happy to entertain a motion to suspend the rules. Oh, Councilmember Lingle.
I make a motion to suspend the rules.
Okay.
Mike Remington, second.
Mike Remington, second.
All right. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those, all those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And would someone like to make a motion on the agenda bill? Councilmember Lengel?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion. I make a motion to approve Agenda Bill AB 20-58, Federal Ward Standards, with the understanding that this policy will be incorporated into the final procurement policies that will be subsequently reviewed.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second, Michelle Hoag.
All right. So councilmember Lengel moved, councilmember Hoag seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And, and moving on to Agenda Bill 20-59, Release Hiring Restriction for Assistant Planner Permit Technician for Discussion and/or Decision. As we know, Ms. Thomas is out on vacation this week. This has been discussed at length over the last several months and discussed at most recent council meeting. This is, our planning and community development department is severely understaffed. There were some questions at the last meeting about will it create a new bottleneck, and the reality is, there's going to be bottlenecks as long as we don't have enough staff to do the work altogether, but we have legal requirements that must be met. So does council have any further questions regarding this ordinance? Councilmember Napland?
I was already unmuted. Sorry. This is actually a question for Steve Lacheski, but all of a sudden, he's not here anymore, is he?
No, he's on vacation. So he made a special exception to attend the meeting this evening.
Yeah, I'll have to ask my question later. I just noticed that it looked like inspections have almost doubled, even though the new construction kind of in the years I was comparing were similar. And so it was curious, I wasn't sure if we're changing the way we track inspections, or if we just have an unbelievably higher number of permits being issued for home remodels. Anyway, I think that would just be a question I'll have to ask later. I just thought it was interesting, but I mean, it certainly looks like there is a heavy workload. So, and I also had a question about the temporary position. There were several questions that came up during the finance meeting related to temporary position versus a permanent position. And, you know, I, just to, the attorneys are here, maybe they could answer this, but if you have a temporary position and it's a term position, if it came into a situation where a layoff occurred, because that is a two-year position, let's say, would they be ineligible for a layoff, for example? So would we have to then, if we had to cut staff, have to cut a longer standing employee that maybe had been here for a lot longer because we can't, they wouldn't be eligible for a layoff because they have a contracted two-year position? Or I don't know, I don't, is that making sense, Eileen or Anne Marie, the question I'm asking? Because that was the debate about, do we do a term position or a, you know, a not, just sort of a standard position?
So a term position does not necessarily guarantee any specific amount of time. You can still terminate an employee or lay off an employee for other reasons during that time. If you have an employment contract with an employee, that will also specify potentially how you can get out of the employment contract, or just, again, you still have the ability to terminate and lay off employees for other reasons. So that should not be something to be concerned about right now.
Okay. And for quick clarification to- At the meeting, and we were all like kind of puzzled of how that, how that would work. I mean, obviously, we hope we would never get to that situation. I mean, I, I never want to be in that situation, but we were just a little puzzled by how that might work.
Yeah, and part of the discussion did surround, you know, the ability to recruit somebody that can do the work if it's short-term versus the permanent position, which it technically is right now. And just a reminder, that typical union practices are, with collective bargaining units, is first, last in, first out. So if you hire somebody, oftentimes, you know, through the union bumping process, if you do have to go through layoffs, depending on the specific situation, oftentimes, it's the last in that is one of the first people out. So that's just one, one little note there. Councilmember Napland?
You said it's currently a permanent position, but I think-
Well, I mean, I mean, what I mean is, is it's not, it's, it's in the budget, it's not listed as a contract position right now.
Right. It's not a contracted position, but in the agenda bill, it does show it has a term that will be through the biennium.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Mayor Portem, Remington?
Thank you. Sorry, Dot. I think I-
Oh, that's okay.
I'm used to seeing limited-term employees, but I personally don't like those limited, especially in development services and community development. When you have inspectors and you have plan reviewers, when you hire them, they understand that, that in, with development, it goes up and down, and, and that there's always the risk in that profession that if, if development cuts off for any reason and there needs to be layoffs, your job may not be secure. So I feel comfortable the way it's written up. We still have the ability as a council, if we're laying folks off, to be able to do that. I think it's a real reasonable question and important one to ask, how it works. But, you know, whether we leave it limited or make it full-time, we still have that ability as a city with direction of the mayor as well, that, you know, if we need to do layoffs. It's a sad position in some ways, because there is that risk. In general, I think with Duval, we've been building 50 structures a year, and it looks like we have more than enough work to be able to support somebody in the long run. So hopefully, that's, that's what will happen. This is such an important position for us. We actually began talking about it last year, and I was kind of hoping the director, Thomas, would bring it forward last fall, but she's tried to find every way she could, I think, to help save the position. But we're really at a point now where we need the person. And, and I think moving forward tonight with this would be a real positive step in supporting the department.
Thank you, Mayor Portem. Councilmember Lengel?
Yeah, I support doing this. I think I've vocalized that before, but to dovetail what Mayor Portem Remington just said, we look a lot of the time at the permit pipeline, which is really a pressing need, given the state statute, but we also have state statutes relative to policy work that we have to do. Not the least of, in the not-too-distant future, is of taking a look at the comp plan. And, and then we have the shorelines issue, and those all have regulatory requirements in terms of timeframes. And I would hate to see us get put in a situation where we're looking for consultants to do those things if, if we can sustain this position. So if nobody else wants to make a motion, I'll make it. But I'm in support of this agenda bill.
Okay. Would anyone else like to comment? And I'd be more than happy to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve AB 20-59, releasing the restricting, the restriction that was part of the budget amendment for assistant planner slash permit technician.
Second, Rednicki? All right. We have a motion by councilmember Lengel, a second by councilmember Rednicki. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Thank you. That's a huge help. We've been wanting to get that position filled for quite a while. And hopefully, as soon as Ms. Thomas returns to the office, we'll get that posted and hopefully be able to get somebody in sooner rather than later so they can start to catch up a little bit. Moving on to Agenda Bill 20-60, ordinance creating new Section 4.04.220 of municipal code employment contracts for discussion by our city attorney.
Sorry, I was just trying to look for a copy of the most recent version. So as was discussed, I believe at the last council meeting, the council majority decided that you wanted to move forward with a small section of amendment to the city's code that addresses the authority to enter into various types of employment-related agreements. This is to clarify the authority for entering into these agreements. It would be a new section of the city's code where it specifies again that it's the city's authority, or the city council's authority to enter these types of agreements, and that the mayor and staff shall not enter into any agreements with, that are related to employment without council approval and also with review by the city attorneys. So this is separate from the contracting authority provisions that are already in Title II of the city's code, but this is really just expanding upon and elaborating on what's in state law. Happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Rednicki?
So as I was reading this, I had a little concern here in that it seemed to me that the authority and the management for these benefits or these promotions stated was now falling further into the hands of council, and that to me sort of blurs the line. Starts to become sort of vehicle for sort of micromanaging that. And I think from my experience over the years of working with many councils, about 14 years of that, I can tell you that there's been many occasions where if a council had this level of authority to make this kind of decision, being such a political body, and seeing the personal issues that come up with a council member and employee, we would really be exposing ourselves to a lot of risk. And I don't know that, you know, you could get, all it takes is one person, the politics of that, and then they don't like that employee, and then it just seems a little, you know, for me as a council, to, to approve this would be hard, because I personally don't know, do I want to even make that kind of decision? If I do, and I want to take that into my own hands and make a decision, then I better do a lot of research. Should I be down there with staff and checking in on everything they're doing to make sure they are worthy to get or not get a promotion? That, to me, is not my job. And so my biggest concern with this and the authority of it is, I've seen many times, and I'm not going to state all the names, but where if this was in place, we would have situations that were very risky for our city, very risky, because council is political. We're a small city and we all know each other. So I'd like to hear from the mayor, like, you know, you manage your staff and you know how employment contracts and management and all these different situations that this is addressing here. Do you see a problem with it? Maybe not. Maybe I'm being overly cautious, but that, I was a little concerned when I read that.
Does council want me to address councilmember Rednicki's question? Okay, so I'm not, or Mayor Portem Remington?
Yeah, I'm happy to hear your input, mayor, on this. I was trying to, I appreciate hearing councilmember Rednicki's experience from the past, but you know, if I had a question, as I understand it, it's already state law. We're just simply, you know, bringing that into our code and clarifying. Anne Marie, is that correct? I mean, it's already state law, and we're just simply codifying it.
Yeah, I think what happened is there's been some confusion over the years about various types of employment contracts. So this is really just trying to outline what the city of Duval really wants to do with respect to employment agreements. This isn't, this shouldn't be seen as impacting management rights. It's really just the authority to enter into contracts. The mayor will still have the authority to manage the city's employees and cats, apparently. That is cracking me up.
Cat is trying to come in and eat my dinner.
So really, this is just the actual entering of the contract. These are things that the city council already does. So for example, the city council already approves the collective bargaining agreements. If you have a new employee where you're entering into an employment contract with that employee, ultimately, the city council would be the, would have the authority to approve the contract. The mayor then carries out the terms of the contract and manages that employee. It's things like that. So it's not taking away the mayor's management rights. That is still solely within the mayor's duties and roles. This is really just the, the actual putting the, the contract in place and potential amendments to the contract.
And one last comment, mayor, I'd like to make, if you don't mind. I always try to look at the long-term picture. What are we trying to accomplish? When you have unions, it's important that you don't have a lot of separate contracts. You have a union contract that addresses things with that, the employees that belong to the union. And I want to be very specific. In this case, we have a PIO, we certainly have a emergency manager, and we have some other positions as well. And I would prefer instead having separate contracts with an employee that's part of a bargaining group. You just have it within the bargaining group. You can do two things. You can identify what the pay is or other stipulations that go along with the position in terms of hours and so on. It also allows us to be very clear that, you know, and I'll use the PIO as an example, that's usually a management position. It's usually within the executive's authority to release press releases, but it's often delegated or assigned to somebody. We're not a big enough city to have a city communication officer or PIO, and that's, that's a whole group. So we assign it to an employee, in this case, in a bargaining group. So it also allows us, within the language and bargaining, to be able to say, we're not giving up this position to the bargaining group. They're going to do the work, but we recognize that it's retained. That is a responsibility of management and can be returned outside the bargaining group. So my point in saying all this is, you know, we, it's normal to have a contract with directors and, and certain employees, but usually within a bargaining group, the only one you get to bargain, bargain with according to perk, because you can't pull an employee out and just say, hey, guess what, we're going to make a side deal. You have to negotiate with the designated folks for the union. And that's just perk rules. And it doesn't mean you can't, within that, have some agreements, but it's still done through the union. So I'm just trying to say that long-term view, we want to make sure that we're really clean, that we have a union contract, that, you know, if there's add-to-pays for this extra work, that it's really clear what those add-to-pays are. And that allows you to have all of it within the contract approved by council and not have side deals. So they get us in trouble either with perk or, or lose track of these. So I think we're headed in the right direction here, and my encouragement, you know, is, is best we can is to try to get away from side contracts, have our union contracts with employees, have them really clear, and be able to move forward. I think this is one step in doing that, that these things come to council like all other union contracts. I think it cleans things up, not just for us, but for council members and mayors in the future. Thank you.
You're on mute.
The cat stepped on that. That was not, that was my external speaker. You know, I think we're all in agreement that, you know, the way things were done in the past was not the best way to go about things. And I do want to make clear that the PIO, the original PIO contract under, with the employee that is represented by collective bargaining unit, that was reviewed by the collective bargaining unit and the business agent, and they signed off on it. So from that perspective, that review did happen. My concern is that I believe that there needs to be a dollar threshold, because the time it takes for staff to bring these through council, small things through council, and get city attorney approval with three touches, can often, can easily over, become more than the amount of the additional help to begin with. So, you know, I have absolutely no problem with coming in and sharing when we have to do some of these things, but I do worry about the dollar amount and the cost to the city, especially when council continues to ask to reduce legal services costs. When you add in council- When you add in council approval and we, I put everything in employment through the city attorney's attorney's office already. But when you have to bring three touches to a council, that extended extends the cost of doing anything. And really, when you add directors into the mix, while they are salaried, it is a significant time and cost burden as well. So my recommendation is finding a reasonable threshold. As far as council approval and reporting to council when smaller contracts do happen. But to council mayor Pro Tem Remington's point, that is something that, you know, we hope to be talking about during collective bargaining this year. Because we have needs and we only have, I think, six non non-represented employees in the city and four of those are directors. And so our ability to do work. Outside of the directors, that may be extra work that needs to get done right now is severely limited. So I just wanted to to throw that out there. Councilmember Lengel.
Yeah, I'd like to address that a little bit. I mean, I I think I've said before, and I still feel this way, that we're better off writing job descriptions that provide for this flexibility.
Yep.
In which case then we don't have to have separate employee contracts at all. And we don't have to have the legal expenses. But the other point in the ordinance, which I don't think we want to lose track of, is the second whereas is. And when, you know, council's authority is to approve compensation, all forms of compensation under state law. And when we have a job description and we have a budget approval. We can do some levels of anticipating. What an extra amount of work might be. And we should at least be thinking about it in terms of potential overtime and the rules that apply to that. So I think what I like about this ordinance is that it recognizes the the council's role. But it also, it it still allows for separate employment agreements. But that isn't, but we get to take care of all of those things as a group, both administration and council through the budgeting process. And as long as it's all right there as part of the budget, the rest of it should go very smoothly. And we should be able to avoid employment agreements. And, you know, combining everything that's been said, councilmember Remington's point about collective bargaining agreements, the degree to which we can build in some things there. The fact that we have a budget process, which can be very robust and very well documented. I I I'm good with this. And I I think we can address the mayor's concerns so that we're not coming back with a bunch of individual contracts. Because honestly, I don't like separate employment agreements. And I think the mayor said it very well, that it hasn't kind of worked out very well for us. And it is a practice that has been going on for a while. I mean, I think we've learned that I, although Director Thomas's. Employment contract is currently in an exempt situation. She had a separate employment agreement going back to 2015. It's just been, I mean, the amendments have been unclear. You know, we cleaned that up, what is it, new council meetings ago, so. And then there's always the question about whether, you know, these separate contracts have, if there's an inequity somewhere in there, that it's unintentional. And we just don't want to get ourselves into that mess, I think.
No.
We're just trying to, we're just trying to set a better path for all of us here.
Absolutely, and to councilmember Brad Nicky's point as well. You know, depending on how you interpret the language, it could be easily interpreted as that it gives council more authority over. Over employees. And to her point, you know, I definitely had councilmembers come to me in the past saying that the mayor should, the previous mayor should terminate X, Y, and Z. Or someone was a horrible employee. And that can, I can tell you beyond a shadow of a doubt that those types of actions certainly tainted the way council thought about certain employees. The other thing I do want to mention is I've been approached by employees that are very concerned about this ordinance and what it might mean for them. Because they they hadn't, you know, been talked to about the ordinance inside and are like, wait a minute, what does this mean to me? So just to put that out there, those are other concerns that have been raised. Councilmember Hope.
Oh, I'm I'm glad you brought up money and also the fact that it was brought up to save attorney's fees. Because I was the one that mentioned that at our budget retreat. Is the possibility of trying to work on ways to save on attorney's fees. And to be very honest, we only have a handful, I can count on one hand how many employment contracts there are. So the time it takes an attorney to look at those contracts is minimal. And if we don't have an attorney review those contracts, it could potentially cost us money if there's something that's not done legally.
So can I clarify, I wanted to make clear, I didn't, I want anything, any employment related does get reviewed by the attorney. What my concern is the extra process of going through a three-touch council process and how that gets crazy really quickly.
We just, we just, you know, canceled our rules for three agenda bills tonight. That's not something that you should be worrying about. And I can tell you that not doing this is going to cost us a lot in the long run. And I am in support of this, I appreciate it coming forward.
Councilmember McHenry, we haven't heard from you.
Yeah, I I mean, I support this moving forward, I hear what everyone's saying and and I just think it's a step in the right direction. I'll just leave it at that.
Councilmember Iyer.
I believe it's a step in the right direction, thank you.
All right, so councilmember Lengel expressed interest in working on a perhaps a dollar threshold as far as council approval. Is there anyone else in the group that agrees with that?
I don't think that's what I was saying.
Can you please restate what you're saying, because you said.
I was simply, yeah, yeah, I'm simply saying that employment contracts should be avoided. And and that I don't think there's, I think the council's authority on contracting is pretty clear under state law. And the best way to deal with it is in the budget process, if there's going to be a money issue. Let me give you an example. If we know that we're going to have. Potentially $10,000 in additional outreach to citizens that it could impact. We'll just use Sean as the example because he's the one doing it now. Then we can provide for that in the budget process. And and address it there in budget notes so that that those funds are there. And and worst case is you come back for a release of funds if the amount of money is large. And we've already figured out how to do that in an ordinance where you don't have to come back with a lot of other stuff. So I I just, I don't think we need a dollar limit. I think it'd be, you know, if there's a specific project that we see coming up, revamping the Facebook image or something like that, we can provide for it in budget. And 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 if a threshold is needed at that point, we deal with it through the budget process. So that we always know what our total compensation obligations are to employees, that's what I was trying to say. So if I misled you or I I didn't mean to do that in the way I was describing it. I was just trying to say the budget process is the place to do the the set aside of whatever funds we might need for a special project.
Thank you, Ms. Soto.
Just to point out, there is in the ordinance itself, it does say that the mayor's staff shall not enter into the agreements without authorization from the city council. So if there was a particular contract that needed to not go through the whole city council process. You could at that time have council make a motion to authorize some other sort of process to move that particular contract through.
Oh, good point. Thank you for that clarification. All right, this is the first introduction, oh, councilmember Brad Nicky.
So I just want to restate again, this is a good body of people. We can trust everybody here, I'm sure, this council. I'm just saying, you know, we all won't all be here. So when we make these kinds of ordinances and we put this in place, we have to be aware, because I have seen in the past and you have seen as well. What can happen in a council that decides that they don't like a staff member. I've seen it numerous times. And so I just want to be sure that what we create here for the future does not give a council the kind of authority. Where someone can come in, use their political maneuverings. Because, oh, we can also do side deals too, if we wanted to, if we have enough power to do it. And so I just want to make sure that what we have has a good balance, it's fair and it's ethical.
So a question for Anne Marie quickly is. You know, we have two CBAs, we have six employees in the entire city that are not represented by CBAs. How does this affect those under the CBAs that may be eligible for promotions? Within their departments that might need a letter of agreement from the director and the individual as they're promoted?
I have to look at the specific language of the CBA. But if they're entitled to something per the CBA, then this isn't, this ordinance is not a way for the council to then. Go around what's already in the CBA. The council, whether it's the people who are sitting here now or people who were on the council before, they already agreed to whatever is in the CBA. So it it really will depend on are you actually entering into a new agreement? If it's an actual agreement, then it may fall under this new ordinance. Or if it's something that's just required as part of the CBA, that's already done, that's already a done deal. So I would want to address the specific instances after reviewing the CBA. But those will be case by case determinations.
All right, thank you, councilmember Iyer.
I mean, I I guess, just to throw my two cents in, I tried to be brief, but felt compelled to say some additional thoughts. I mean, I I identify with councilmember Remington that this is a course correction. And that the previous practices were not ideal and. Were dangerously close to being out of alignment with state, with, you know, state law. So I think, I think previous practices, the norm was not necessarily normal from my perspective. And I think I, we do have some unique challenges as a small city. Pocket positions where they're not anywhere close to being full positions and I sympathize with that. I do sympathize with that challenge. And also having the the lack of. Extensive non-rep staff makes it complex. But I think in terms of the big picture of the practice of. This type of agreement, I think it's a course correction and I think it's. It's a solid norm and and I also. Wanted to, you know, state my support for councilmember Lengel's statements where as the budget, through the budget process, this can be something that's shaken out. And as with the FTE allocations and the creation of FTEs and positions, it's kind of the normalization of a process to. To, so that a process that these things can be addressed, whether that's FTEs or, you know, positions. So that we don't have a big amorphous ball of stuff that happens and we're not sure, you know, people are constantly shifting and moving. And and while that is a super, I could see it as being an important aspect of having that flexibility. It's just something that doesn't really fit, kind of, you know, that form or process. You have one foot out of the system and one foot in the system and and you have one foot in a rigorous. Union-based contract system and then you have, you're kind of trying to operate on the outside of that kind of other half. So I I think, I I think it's a good step forward and I think. As a, as a public employee, I mean, it's important to to see that those are constraints that 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 exist in the system that that we work, you know. So I guess with that, I'll be quiet, thank you.
Councilmember Napland.
I just wanted to say I appreciate all the help in drafting this. And how I see this ordinance is it's an effort to reduce risk. And I think in the long run, we will be a more transparent city. And will certainly. Reduce our risk because we have seen that contracts have not been reviewed and it has created trouble. And so I I just want to say that this process will reduce risk, not increase risk.
I also want to make a clarification that all contracts that were in place were put in place prior to. Me being the chief administrative officer of the city. So we are addressing some of those issues this evening. So I know that we have at least one council member that did not want or did not want to move forward on this this evening. This is the first touch.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me?
I I wasn't completely done speaking.
I'm sorry, I I thought you were, you stopped.
Well, it, you know, you rebutted something I said and I I feel like I I need to respond to that. Because there have been contracts that have been signed by this administration. And I I just want to clarify that the reason we are here is because contracts continue to be signed. Or this ordinance was necessary.
No.
The risk being created in our city.
Councilmember Napland, I would like to correct you on that, and you and I have had multiple conversations on this. Is that any contracts that I signed, I had checked with our city administrator on. And any new contracts would have been signed, reviewed by legal. So when you have, when you put yourself in the shoes of a chief administrative officer and you trust your highest level employees to be telling you the truth. And as this has gone on, the administration has learned a lot that we were not told when these things were going on. And you know that. And so I really take issue with trying to make this a personal issue. Rather than fixing the issues of the past and fixing what mistakes have gone forward and what misinformation have been provided to me and others in city and hall by previous employees. And with that, any other council members want to speak on this issue? Councilmember Iyer.
Just a side note, I think it's important that we, with all due respect. I think it's important that in these meetings, that folks are allowed to. Complete their their statements and and not be interrupted, I think that's part of the. Our rules of order. This is not really the best forum to make points of order, but I think it's really important that we recognize that folks get to speak until they're done speaking. With all due respect, I make this statement. And I just think that that's an important statement to 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 make.
Point well taken, councilmember Iyer, but I also will not stand for misinformation to be put on the public record. Councilmember Hope.
So to add to that, I think if you want to continue to debate with council, that maybe you could let Mike take over the the leading meeting.
I'm not debating, I'm just, I was asked for my opinion, I corrected the record of misinformation and that's it. So what I'm asking for council now is where you would like to move on this issue this evening, being that it's the first touch.
I'd like to suspend our rules and move this along.
I'm not hearing a second. Councilmember Lengel.
I'll second suspending the rules.
Discussion. Councilmember Brad Nicky.
For an ordinance, I think we should spend more time reflecting and thinking about what we are creating as far as policies. I will, I will say and state again from my experience that yes, when you give the authority you're going to give to council.
the authority you're going to give to council, and how it can be managed, is something that I'm very concerned about. And again, I will say that in the past, I have seen and experienced things that could have happened, had we given them this much authority. You all are great people here, so I don't think that you would be doing anything, any side deals or unfair behavior at all. But I am saying from my past experience and what I've seen, I would like to make sure that I give this a little more time and study before making a decision on the fly. That's all.
Councilmember McHenry?
Respect Councilmember Rednicki's opinion, I, you know, to play devil's advocate, I could say the same thing about some future mayor. I mean, we just never know, nobody has a crystal ball. So I think for me personally, this having been reviewed by the city attorney, I feel comfortable moving forward. I don't know that waiting another meeting or two is going to change anyone's minds. I think we might just rehash the same argument, but, you know, that's just my opinion.
Councilmember Iyer?
In terms of the discussion, I feel like this doesn't, this isn't giving council any more authority than it already has. It's affirming authority that council already has. It's affirming that authority already in place through state law. So that's my perspective. I, I am, I, I think the other side of this, to me, in terms of respecting the, some of the touches, I don't know if we need three, but this was just, this just was published out in the world for the public Thursday last week, so I, I also don't feel like, I, I feel like there is a, an understanding of, of the creation of this, you know, where, why, where it came from, the origin of it, and I don't necessarily know if that's going to evolve too much over the next couple of weeks, kind of hearing the discussion here, but I think out of, I'd be hesitant to you know, ride the, the wave of kind of emotion right now, and to, you know, just get this done, I think, I think it's fine to let it, let it air to the public for another two weeks for, for a public site, but like I said, I, I think this just affirms things that are already in place, so.
All right, any further discussion on suspension of the rules? Seeing none, all those in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye, and actually, this will be a roll call vote, because I know it's split. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
This is on suspending the rules. Councilmember Rednicki?
Nay.
Councilmember Iyer?
Nay.
Councilmember McHenry?
Nay.
Councilmember Remington?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoag?
Aye.
Councilmember Napland?
Councilmember Napland, you're on mute?
Aye.
Councilmember Lengel?
Aye.
The ayes have it, motion passes. All right.
Actually, the motion doesn't pass, you need five to vote to suspend the rules.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we will move this on to the next agenda. Thank you. And just a point of reference, I would request that council members also call, potentially talk to department directors, because the first time that, other than the finance director, that the department director saw this ordinance was also when it went out to council. So they've had three days, four days to review it, and it would be respectful to them to discuss this with them as well. So with that, Councilmember McHenry?
Just a quick question on that, I thought we were still supposed to ask questions through you, so I just wanted to confirm that, or are you saying?
Please do, please do, and I'll forward it on. We're trying to manage their workloads right now, so yes, if you send it to me, we will make sure that they get it to you and set up those meetings. Thank you. All right, moving on to unfinished business, AB 20-51, resolution declaring certain city property surplus for discussion and/or decision, and I believe the clerk was going to take this for the discussion side.
I don't really have anything else to add than what Steve said during the public hearing, unless council has questions.
Seeing no questions, do we have a motion on this agenda item?
We need to suspend the rules on this, or no?
Jody, we, did we already touch this previously?
Yeah, so I think this was on, under new business, the last meeting, and then a public hearing tonight, and then unfinished business tonight, so technically, you could consider that all.
Move that we suspend the rules to, for on this agenda item, of three touches.
Second, Rednicki.
Okay, we have a first by Councilmember Iyer, a second by Councilmember Rednicki to suspend the rules. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, do we have a motion to approve Agenda Bill 20-51?
Move that we pass Agenda Bill 2051, surplus of city property.
Do you have a second?
Rednicki?
Okay, Councilmember Iyer made the motion, Councilmember Rednicki seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. With that, we are to our last item, unfinished business. Agenda Bill 20-26, City Attorney Services General Municipal Law Contract, Madrona Law Group, for introduction and discussion and/or decision. So the contract that is before you is the list of options that council put in the legal services template with some cleanup, and then, as Councilmember Hoag and I discussed, I believe a little over a month ago, we put in a review date of this winter with, to review the performance of the firm and decide whether to extend the contract or, or go out to RFP again. This overall has been discussed extensively, so council, it's your option on what to do. I would caution that we are probably getting close again to our cap due to recent legal expenses, and so I do want to be caution about time to get a final contract in place, and being able to have access to legal services specifically for staff and our development projects. So with that, it's open for discussion. Councilmember Hoag?
And a question, I noticed on the agenda, it does not say and/or decision, it just says discussion.
It should say introduction, discussion, and decision, so it's completely up to council. This is one of those that has been discussed extensively.
Mayor Mike Remington, another question, if you may?
Mm-hmm.
So this is up for a vote and, and discussion, decision tonight. I also just wanted to maybe it's been answered already, but it, it seems like we've discussed this enough, that this, the three-touch rule isn't involved here, is that right? I mean, we're just voting tonight, so.
In the reality, yes, we've been talking about this for months. This is just the final version. We've had other versions on the agenda multiple times, so while it's technically, it is unfinished business, the final version, the contract is new, but that is not uncommon with agenda bills that get altered in between meetings.
Well, I appreciate that. I think council is ready to move forward. I think everybody is ready to move forward and, and try to make a decision on it. I was looking at this, and I mean, the whole purpose we're here is to select a law firm for providing legal service for the city of Duval, and, you know, I don't know how the vote's going tonight, so we may have selected a law firm and moved forward. But I, I realize it's been a long process, we've recognized that this is a high priority to us as a city council, we recognize, you know, I think, Mayor, you've commented that this is urgent, that we, we get this in place and move forward. But I recognize, you know, not knowing how the vote comes out, so I, I'd like to look at amending some of the language in here to just clarify our process in moving this forward, recognizing that Madrona may be selected tonight, but should they not be, I would request amended language to the bill with the following language. In the event Madrona Law is not selected to represent the city of Duval, the city shall bring forward at the next council meeting, or as soon as practical, the second highest scoring law firm for council consideration decision.
We don't have a motion on the floor yet?
So if I, so we're in the discussion phase, so it's just something I'm asking fellow council members. It just smoothes things out. Like you say, we may have a law firm tonight and move forward. I just want to make sure that we have something in place, so we're not just dangling. This is important, it's a high priority to us. I appreciate that our directors had weighed in and had recommended, that at least three of the directors had recommended Madrona Law be selected tonight, but I do recognize, they also said, and I quote, "Our city would be fortunate to have either of these firms," they were speaking of Madrona Law and Ogden Murphy Wallace, they went on to say, "As both are more than qualified, capable of providing the services our city needs and desires." So the reason I was just bringing this added language is it just clarifies where we're headed here, that we can make sure that we move forward, and this isn't drug out. Like I say, it may be decided tonight, so my language would be moot, but in the end case, Madrona was not selected, it provides a, a option for, for us in the process to move forward.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Remington. I would also like to know, an email that I did not forward to council is that our insurance company, when reviewing the contract, also supports Madrona as well. And so, one more piece of information. Councilmember Lengel?
I, I think that what the mayor pro tem has put forward makes a lot of sense. The, it's, it's very important that we keep the process moving along. I appreciate the fact that administration included Ogden Murphy's information in the packet as well, because that really gives us the ability to move things along, depending on how the vote goes. So I would like to see something like that added to the agenda bill.
Okay, any further council discussion? Councilmember Iyer, and Councilmember Napland, and McHenry?
Incur with those thoughts.
I'm in agreement as well.
I'm fine with adding that language.
Councilmember Hoag, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you?
You just said, "I'm also in agreement with that change."
Councilmember Nicky, did you have any thoughts?
I'm just still trying to digest if something went different tonight, and we were to go with the other idea candidate. Are you, are you saying in that change that we will have a discussion about that other law firm, and have a discussion, and then go through a process again to determine whether or not we want to make a decision on that?
Mayor, I could clarify what that language would mean, if you don't mind my adding that.
Absolutely.
So I, I guess this is about intent, Diane, and thank you for asking, because this is really important to us. It really is more about continuing the process if Madrona was not selected for some reason tonight. The intent wasn't to choose somebody else tonight, the intent was that, you know, we, we would, you know, have some time here to reflect on, you know, what direction we're going. It would provide the mayor, because we don't have a contract with anybody else, we have some discussions and agreement with what a contract would look like with Madrona, so that contract is coming forward tonight. I respect the fact that the mayor would need time, if Madrona was not selected tonight, to be able to talk to, you know, the other law firm and, and work out language. We, we already have, you know, a contract was included in the RFQ, so each company that put in to be our law firm has seen that draft contract. Now, since that time, we've added a, a template that has a little different language and choices for the mayor to, to choose. But I just respect that this doesn't happen overnight, she would have to talk to the other law firm, she would have to come up with, you know, a contract, that contract would have to be brought forward to council for consideration and discussion. So this is in no way my intent to rush something through, it was just that this has been a very long process. And again, this all may be moot, and I'm wasting folks' time, if Madrona's selected tonight, we move on, we have our law firm ready to go. But I, I like to plan out for contingencies, the battalion chief in me, if something goes, you know, different than what we think or thought, or, you know, what are the possibilities? So the only intent was to say the next part of the process would be that the mayor would bring forward the, the other law firm. We had two of them that were both rose to the top, and then that would require more discussion and, and give the mayor time and staff to contact the other law firm and work out a contract, and, and then bring it forward for council's vote. So that was my only intent, not to make a decision on something else tonight, but just simply to, we're voting on Madrona Law, and, and if for some reason that didn't pan out tonight, then we have a process to move forward in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. And I do, I do want to point out as well, that as you can, I believe it's in the packet, on the other firm is approximately 30% more per hour. We have included in this contract and out at the beginning of the year. And we have no guarantee, especially since this has been nearly a six-month process, that the other firm will continue to be interested in representing the city. I don't know if any council members have contacted the other firm. I know we haven't, because you, you contacted the firm that you provided the offer to. And so I just want to make sure that council is clear on that, and that if, if council chooses to go a different direction, we are still going to have to do contract amendments to have legal services for the coming months, because it's probably going to take a minimum of a month to get through another firm, while we are working on CARES Act funding, managing a pandemic, and trying to get our budget done. So I would like folks to consider that as you're considering this this evening. And the impact on staff in particular.
So Mayor Protem, what's next?
So I, I don't want to, in fact, we can still have more discussion, but I would move that we vote on Agenda Bill 20-26, City Attorney Services General Municipal Law Contract, Madrona Law Group.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion or amendments?
Mayor, I would request that we amend the agenda bill to include the following language. "In the event Madrona Law is not selected to represent the city of Duval, the city shall bring forward at the next council meeting, or as soon as practical, the second highest scoring law firm for council consideration decision."
Councilmember Lengel?
I just would restate that I support that, what I agree, I, I agree with that approach. I think we have to have a next step, depending on how the vote goes.
So we, so are you seconding the amendment?
Yes, I'm seconding the amendment.
Okay, any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And so clerk, you're going to need to help me a little bit here on what the underlying motion is at this point. With that language added.
This is what I have, and I was trying to write fast, so Mayor Protem, you may have to fill in a couple of blanks. I have a motion to approve a city attorney services contract, general menus, general municipal law contract with Madrona Law Group, PLLC, I guess, dash, in the event Madrona Law is not selected to represent the I guess, dash, in the event Madrona Law is not selected to represent the city, the city will bring forward at the next meeting or when, that's the part I lost?
As soon as practical.
Okay, thank you.
I recognize that if, if that were to occur, you don't negotiate overnight with somebody else. It, it takes time, and I, I just respect the mayor would have to work through that. And I want to give her that flexibility if it was necessary.
So would bring forward at the next council meeting or as soon as practical,
the second highest?
Highest scoring?
Law firm.
Firm selected, oh no, sorry, I wrote selected twice.
Yeah.
Consideration and decision.
Yes.
Sorry, that was.
Okay, so in a sense, I believe what we have here is a vote on the underlying agenda bill with instructions if the agenda bill does not pass. So with that, is there any further discussion?
Mayor, I just want to say briefly, like you said, we've had a lot of discussion and I think, I, I would just recommend that we vote. I do want to make a comment, for me personally, this has been one of the bigger challenges, not emotionally, in a very practical way. I had opportunity to sit on the interviews. I have to tell you, I was very impressed with Eileen Kiefer. Certainly, we've worked with Anne Marie so well and very impressed with her as well, their skill set. I do recognize that when you hire folks, you hire the entire law firm. Law firms work that way, they have different expertise and different folks that work in it. I've been back and forth, I've said, absolutely, I'm going with Madrona. I've said, you know, it's time for a change. I will just simply say that in my experience, sometimes change is important. It creates some, some heartache. In this case, the mayor's pointed out very wisely that, that, you know, we're working with Madrona, we have a lot of history, they have a lot of experience. And, and she's pointed out some of the things with, you know, others cost more. And, you know, that's a consideration. But I'm just simply, have no interest in influencing any of my fellow council members. But I've watched a lot go on here, I've seen a lot of the, the challenges, sometimes over a long period, and we've certainly been with our previous law firm for over 20 years. And, and many of those have moved on and are with the Madrona. But I'll, I'll just simply say, I, I feel like it's time for a change. I'm embarrassed to say that in some ways because, like you say, I just absolutely enjoyed working with Eileen and Anne Marie. And I really deeply respect Madrona, but sometimes it's, it's time for a change. And I had to go with my heart and my gut feel on it. And, and sometimes that's important for a city, even though it takes a lot of, you know, change is challenging. And there's unknowns, we may be with somebody, we go, well, it didn't work out too well. But they, they also interviewed very well, they have an incredible depth at Ogden Murphy Wallace, and, and I'll simply leave it at that.
Right, any other council comments this evening? Seeing none, we will go ahead and take the vote, clerk, it will be a roll call vote.
Sorry, hold on, I'm just writing something. Councilmember Brudniky.
Okay, just let me clarify, we are approving the City Attorney Services General Law Contract for Madrona Group, correct?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Councilmember Ayer.
Oh.
Councilmember McHenry.
Nay.
Councilmember Remington.
Nay.
Councilmember Hoag.
Nay.
Councilmember Napland. No. Councilmember Lengel.
No.
And nays have it, motion fails.
All right, thank you. We've got a lot of extra work on our plate. And moving on to an executive session for potential litigation, 15 minutes, under RCW 42.30.110 sub 1, aye. I will be, we will be leaving the meeting, clerk will be on, we have no other additional business.
Mayor, Mike Remington, I apologize for interrupting, I thought I saw Eileen had her hand up. And I know you were getting ready to move this on, but if Anne, or if Eileen wanted to say something, I wanted to.
Please. Oh, you're on mute.
She doesn't look like she's needed, though.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I just wanted to thank y'all for, for the opportunity, for the consideration. I really enjoyed working with you for the short time I did. So I wish you the best of luck, I'll enjoy working with you, you know, until you find a new contract. But just wanted to thank you from the bottom of my heart for the consideration, appreciate it.
All right, thank you. And with that, we will move into executive session, council, you have the invite. I will leave, clerk will stay on. It will be Anne Marie and the rest of council in the executive session.